Good evening and welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for Monday, November 23rd, 2015. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, Sabrina, please call roll.
Mr. Carmichael.
Here.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Modri.
Here.
Mrs. Blood.
Present.
Item 2A, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act posted in the entry to the council chambers. Item 3, approval of minutes and advisory committee reports. 3A, approval of agenda. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 3B, approval of consent agenda. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? Mr. Modri.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure when we approve the consent agenda that the minutes from the last meeting that we're approving are those that are in our agenda packet and not those that are standalone out on the website.
Sabrina, would you like to comment on that?
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
There is a copy of minutes that are also standalone out on the website that are in air, the ones that are in our agenda packets are the correct set of minutes.
Okay, I understand. We didn't update the other one after we updated the one in the packet, that's all.
We are approving what's in our packet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 3C is under consent. Item 4, under consent. Item 5, special presentation. 5A, proclamation, Saturday, November 28th, 2015, as Small Business Saturday. Proclamation, whereas the government of the Bellevue, Nebraska celebrates our local small business and contribution they make to our local economy and community according to the United States Small Business Administration. There are currently 28 million small businesses in the United States. They represent more than 99% of American companies, create 2/3 of the net new jobs, and generate half of private gross domestic product. And whereas, small businesses employ half of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas 89% of the consumers in the United States agree that small businesses contribute positively to the local community by supplying jobs and generating tax revenue. And whereas, 86% of consumers in the United States have small businesses in their community that the consumers would miss if the small businesses closed. And whereas, 93% of consumers in the United States agree that it is important for people to support the small business that they value in their community. Whereas, 90% of consumers in the United States are willing to pledge support for buy local movement. And whereas, Bellevue, Nebraska supports our local business that creates jobs, boosts our local economy, and preserves our neighborhoods. And whereas, advocacy groups and public-private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I read as Sanders, Mayor for the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim November 25th, November 28th, 2015, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Mr. Risto.
Mayor, council members, thank you for proclaiming November 28th, Small Business Saturday. It's a great day to give a shout-out to small businesses, not only in our community but across the country, and it's a reminder that it's really the backbone of many communities. So while Small Business Saturday is a day to take in recognition, every day we should remember that our small businesses and businesses within our community are the backbone to our community, and that we want to encourage our local residents too to support their small businesses. I think we've said it before, that small business is really where our next spurt of growth will come with the economy and the rebound here. So the more support we give to our small businesses and businesses within our community generate a prosperous and growing community too. So proclamation is a great day to kick it off, but keep on top of the mind to remember that small businesses are really our next success story. So, thank you, Mayor, and get out there and shop local. We're going to seal off 370 in Cornhusker from 72nd. I'm just kidding.
That's right.
Shop local.
Thank you, Jim Risto, Bellevue, Chamber of Commerce. Item number 5B, presentation. Andrew Hoey, webinar, request for information, presentation on open data. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, I just wanted to interject here for a minute. Unfortunately, when I brought forward my open data information, we had, we were sandwiched in between two really important issues, and so you got a Reader's Digest version of it. When the council deported a request for information, I approached the administration and asked that we bring Andrew Ho forward to do a webinar to better describe what open data can do for Bellevue, and why we should encourage Bellevue to move forward with an open data policy.
I'm not Andrew, but he's going to be on the phone. Andrew, are you there?
I am.
We have him on speaker now. Put a microphone on.
Okay. Can you confirm that everybody can hear me?
Everybody here, okay?
Yes. Perfect. Well, hey, are we still, are we ready to start that?
Almost. Give me one second here.
Just let me know when you guys are ready to start.
Okay, we're ready. We're ready to go.
Perfect. Well, hey, so Phil, my presentation, the first slide is up?
It is.
Perfect. Well, hey, before we begin, I just want to give a quick thank you to Carol for inviting me here today to speak with you guys and give you a little bit more information about open data. Also, special thanks to Phil, Dan, and Larry for helping make this happen. You know, I just wanted to spend a couple of minutes, I know you guys have a lot of important things on your agenda, but just want to spend a couple of minutes and elaborate on what Carol has brought up about open data maybe a couple of weeks ago. So I've got a little presentation prepared, it's only a couple of minutes, and I've got a couple of examples I would like to pull up for you guys, and I'll leave a couple of minutes just for you guys to ask some questions as well. But just by way of introduction, really quickly, my name is Andrew Ho. I've been a consultant for local governments on open data for several years now. We actually work with the City of Grand Island Beatrice pretty closely, so I know Mayor Stan over at Beatrice, and I work pretty closely with the city administrator Marlin over at Grand Island. So as you guys continue to think about open data, if you guys would like to get in touch with any of these folks, I'd be happy to make any introductions. But, Phil, I think we're ready to go to the second slide. Just a quick reminder or refresh for what open data is. It's really not a new concept, it's not a new thing. A lot of folks are already doing open data. It's really just a new way of looking at how to incorporate technology into how we can run governments better. And the definition, it's kind of long-winded, but I'll just read it really quickly, is the concept of turning data into a more useful resource for citizens, for businesses, for city staff, by ultimately making it more accessible, more transparent, and more understandable. It's kind of a mouthful there, but basically the big idea is that we're trying to help governments make better use of data. How do we make data more useful? And, you know, it's a big question. I think the best way to describe it is to probably show you examples of how some other cities are using open data to run their cities better. Phil, would you want to hop over to the State of Washington, open data example I had sent you? Let me know when you have that pulled up.
I have Seattle.
In talking with Carol, she's mentioned that education is maybe a topic of conversation or something that the community cares about. So the State of Washington also, you know, put some emphasis into education. One of the big goals is to become a world-class education, you know, state for families to raise their kids in. Are you guys seeing that the three goals or tiles that are pulled up for Washington?
I don't know, only one.
Phil, could you confirm, are you guys seeing the education side for the State of Washington?
Nope.
Phil, are you still there?
Yeah, hold on a second.
I would say click on, click on one of those, I would suggest maybe the K-12 More High School graduates, maybe clicking on that and showing, that'll pull up another page that can show you a good example of what open data is about.
Okay, we're on it.
Okay. Are you in the K-12 More High School Graduates page?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, if you want to scroll down that and just kind of show everybody what the general page is about, it's a lot of data that's behind this website, so a lot of high school graduation rates, a lot of reports, a lot of data. But basically, if you keep scrolling, you'll see kind of a storytelling aspect, you know, telling, you know, people why this is a priority, what the state is doing in terms of funding to support high school graduation, what things they're working on, why does it matter, how can it help? And so, you know, open data for that, for the State of Washington, it's really a platform for them to tell their story about, hey, why is Washington a great state to live in, and why is it a great place for you to raise your kids? And so, open data has the ability to communicate that to your constituents, to your citizens, to your businesses, about, hey, why do you want to live in Bellevue? Why should you start your business here? Tying together data with stories about how great it is to live in Bellevue. Going back to, going back to the slide, the next one is about who is doing open data today. You can see a pretty big list here, if you got it pulled back up, Phil.
It is.
You know, from states to cities to counties, all across the country, you know, it's not really, you're saying, like I was saying before, you can see that your State of Nebraska has an open data website where they make a lot of data publicly available. And, you know, Grand Island, Beatrice, are a couple of other locals in Nebraska, but if you see across that list, a lot of, a lot of big cities, you know, that you recognize. You know, innovation is a funny thing. It's a lot of times perception is reality when it comes to, when it comes to being innovative. And when you're, when people are talking like, hey, who are the leaders in, you know, in technology? You know, open data is one of the big things that people look at, is how available, how accessible is the data for a city? And I could pause there for a second. Councilmember Blood, if there's anything you'd like to ask, feel free to jump in. It's hard for me to gauge how everybody's receiving this, because I'm not in the room, I can't see faces, but if there's anything you want to ask, go ahead and jump in, or we can just keep going through.
I think they're ready to just keep moving forward. Andrew, did you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I think they're just ready to keep moving forward.
Okay. Yeah, the next slide, I wanted to spend like a minute or two on some of the, we call them positive business outcomes of open data. A lot of times, folks are open to the idea of, okay, yeah, we have nothing to hide, we would like to make our data publicly available, but what are, you know, why? Are people going to care? What are some positive outcomes of opening up our data? And I've outlined a couple here that we've gathered from, you know, from feedback from other cities, other communities that are doing open data, on telling us, hey, you know, these are some good things that we're seeing come of open data. You know, improving transparency, improving the public trust in governments by proactively saying, hey, we have nothing to hide. These are, you know, this is how much money we're spending, we're spending money on these projects. That kind of, that kind of, you know, building trust is a first, is a great first step into wanting to increase, you know, participation and engagement in the community. We talked, you know, I personally speak with a lot of cities who are looking for creative ways to increase citizen engagement. And, you know, one of the, one of the really good ways to increase engagement is by lowering the barrier to, to helping citizens understand what's going on with governments. Not a lot of folks, you know, understand the ins and outs of how a government works, and so by lowering the barrier to entry, if you will, of understanding, of, you know, communicating, hey, this is how, this is how we're operating, these are the things that we care about, and having an open dialogue and helping citizens understand is a great way to then get them to engage and give you feedback on how to, how to set policies, how to allocate resources. Another great example of open data is, it creates a self-service environment for economic development. When I talk to local communities, driving businesses, you know, retaining businesses is a huge goal of theirs, and to make your economic development data publicly available and self-service just helps accelerate and helps improve that environment. Making your business licenses, building permits, you know, publicly available in a way that's easily understandable is a great outcome of open data. And then, just a couple of seconds, on the internal side of things, you know, helping staff, you know, be able to do their jobs better on a day-to-day basis. A lot of decisions and day-to-day activity relates to data, and to save staff the time and the resources off looking for data by having a place where it's all, where it's already available, makes it easier for them to do their job, helps them collaborate better. So if you're somebody from, you know, the planning department, you don't need to reach the finance department to find finance data, because it's already all in a self-service area. Somebody in your economic development, the department doesn't need to reach out to your police chief to figure out, you know, public safety data. It's already all in one self-service area. And that's, I mean, that's kind of the majority of what I wanted to emphasize about open data is the positive business outcomes. It's not doing open data just to make of doing open data, it's the positive outcomes that can come from opening up and freeing up the information that you guys collect currently. What I have left is an example from Grand Island. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with what Marlin and their finance regisbilly is doing at Grand Island, but it's related to their finance data, opening that up, making it very transparent about how they're allocating and spending taxpayer dollars. Phil, I don't know if you hopped over to the next slide, but it has a couple of screenshots of what we're doing with Grand Island, and I also gave you the link if you want to go to it, and just showed everybody really quickly what Grand Island is doing, called Open Budget.
Okay, we're on it.
Yep. So feel free to scroll around that, click around a little bit, but it's showing kind of the, all the individual departments and vendors that they're working with, the projects that they work on, just making it very easy for people to understand. Instead of looking at a PDF or looking at a report that has a lot of numbers, everything's very graphical and explains kind of, you know, how, you know, what the transactions are, what the city's spending money on, where the funding is coming from. And then, Phil, for the sake of time, maybe we can just hop to the last slide of kind of how to get started with open data. For most cities, open data isn't something that just comes about overnight. They want, people want to be deliberate, they want to be careful about how they, how they go about it, and there's usually sort of a best practice or a kind of a blueprint that we recommend local governments take when heading into, or thinking about open data like Grand Island and Beatrice. And it's kind of a crawl-run, or actually, it should be crawl-walk-run approach, the thing. The crawl approach might just be to start by thinking of a policy, an open data policy, or some sort of verbiage that describes, hey, this is what we want to accomplish, and then maybe identifying what are some low-hanging fruits in terms of data that can be easily, easily posted and people will care about. So, you know, common pieces of data that cities start with could be economic development data, public safety information, education data. You know, those are, those are, you know, usually the pieces of data that gets a lot of interest, and so maybe starting there is a good idea. And then, you know, in order to expand on the program, you got to identify some good use cases, some good proof points about how the community or how your internal staff are using open data on their, you know, to do their day-to-day job. And the ultimate, where, you know, a lot of cities that are very mature in their open data program get to, is being able to tie data directly to strategic planning. So not only being able to open up data, but to be able to track and measure the city's performance with data. And so, that's kind of the high-level overview of what I wanted to go through. Carol, I don't know if there's anything else you'd like me to add, or I can toss it back over to you.
Andrew, I think the questions that I've had from other people are, explain the difference, and I know the difference, but maybe you can explain it better than I can, the difference between a website and a portal.
The difference between a site, a website and a portal?
Yes. Give it, what would, my interpretation is that a portal is much like a strategic plan. It's a living, breathing document that's constantly drawing information and ever-changing, while a website in general is stagnant. Would that be?
Yeah, that, yeah, I think that's a good explanation to add to that. A website is something that is hosted, and as you would like to put more pieces of information on the website, you have to actively go update it. So the website is only as good and as up-to-date as you spend time updating it, right? That's a pretty easy concept to get. What a portal does is more because it actually ties automatically with some of your systems that house data. So for example, if you're in Bellevue, you guys probably have a finance system. That finance system would be tied directly to the portal so that data will be updated automatically. So whether it's finance data, economic development data, public safety data, all these important pieces of data that people need to get their hands on, we tie those directly in a portal, we tie those directly to your system so that data is automatically updated. So the portal is a self-service place where data gets automatically updated.
Well, and you've kind of answered the next question that I'm asked the most, is won't that create extra work for staff? But what it actually does is, it's already drawing from the work they're currently doing. They're not going to be doing any extra work. What they're going to be doing is taking their work and putting it on steroids, because it's going to make it public information, and it's going to take it to the portal so it can be shared with the masses. Is that correct?
That is correct. And to take it even one step further, it's not just not adding work for them, in a lot of cases, it's eliminating work for them.
Absolutely.
Because a lot of people, a lot of, a lot of time for staff is spent on creating reports and updating with new data. The portal automatically takes care of a lot of that. So if you're looking for an updated report, you just go to the portal, take a screenshot, go to the portal, export, and you're already there, because the data is automatically being updated. So it actually eliminates a lot of the mundane work, you know, with technology. It eliminates a lot of that.
And there's no copyright or infringement on it, so if I'm Eugene Curtin from the Bellevue leader, or Corey Winchester from the Omaha World-Herald, and I need information, I can go right to the portal, get that information, no matter what time or day, what time, day or night, unlike what they would currently have to do, which would be call the city clerk, call the city administrator, right? That information is readily available to all, to our citizens, to the media, to our developers.
Exactly, exactly. A big part of the process that traditionally happens is, somebody needs a piece of information, they might go on to the website, a city website, go look for it, they might be able to find it, they might not, or might not understand it, they email the city clerk, send a FOIA request, there's a certain amount of time, you know, before they get, they get it answered, it's more stat time for you guys to go find the answer and respond. In an open data environment, 24/7, all data is available and easily accessible and easily understood, so that, you know, it's just, the operational efficiency of open data has been one of the real benefits.
And so the strength would be in our partnerships. The more people we partner with, organizations that we partner with, the stronger our data, be it Bellevue Public Schools, the Bellevue Police, Fire and Rescue, Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development, the more that we draw from, the stronger the portal, correct?
Correct, yeah. The portal for the open data program is only going to be as useful and effective as the system and the data that you collect. And so, you know, we really encourage you guys to focus on what people care about in the community. Is it education? Is it public safety? Is it economic development? You know, what is it that people care about? And, you know, give them what they want, provide them the raw resources, the raw data for them to dig into what they're interested in. Do we want to help solve public safety issues? You know, provide them the raw data on crime. Maybe they can, you know, do some trend analysis and figure out, these are the hotspots for crime, and, you know, maybe we can do some things to improve that. So, yeah, it really depends on what you guys care about and how do you provide the right data to support those interests.
Andrew, did you provide us with an example for applications? That was the only thing I didn't see or hear covered.
Application? Could you, Carol, could you tell me more of what kind of application?
For instance, in my, you know, apps, apps such as for transportation.
The Grand Island budget and expenditure, the checkbook example is a really good example of an application. Once you have a lot of data drawing into the portal, you can do a lot of interesting things with it. I even have a, in Seattle, maybe Phil can pop this example up on the screen, I think he already has it at hand, it's the City of Seattle Capital Projects application. Carol, could you pull that one up?
We're on it.
Did you say transit?
He said capital.
Yeah, so any one of those. So basically, this is my hometown in Seattle, you can see all those dots on the map that are showing capital projects that are funded by the city. And so, you know, a citizen who's interested can click on all the categories, or maybe just look at the waterfront, or look at the transit-related projects, and be able to actually dig into some of the details and say, okay, I know there's the construction area, you know, two blocks from where I live, what's going on there? You know, how long is that project in the last four? What's going to be built there? How much money does that mean? You know, how much of my tax dollars are going towards that project? And being able to track the progress of it, you know, read the story and the background behind the project, that's an example of a, of an application that can run off of a portal.
But you could do, I'm sorry, Andrew. I just want to make sure the information is understandable. It could be something as simple as someone could do an app of dog parks. They could say, is that not true? You can do an app that's event-specific in our community if we have the information in our portal.
Exactly, yep.
So you could, just like any other app on a smartphone, you could bring up the app, it could give you a map of the dog parks, so you don't have to sort through the website, it would be one for dog owners, or one for families, it says where the family-friendly parks are, what amenities they have, what events are going on.
Yeah, yeah, that's a, you know, an example, at the City of Carson City over in Nevada, they have an app running off of their portals, portals that people, citizens can download onto their phone. They click into the application, and it shows a map of Carson City, and it shows you where there are dog parks in the city, where there are off-leash areas, and where there are restaurants and other city services like bus stops next to those dog parks. So if you have a dog in Carson City, that's a cool application to own, because anywhere you are in the city, you can pop it open and figure out, hey, you know, I could take my dog to this park, and then I could catch a bug, or I can go catch it by the food here. So it's really something that can improve the quality of life by, you know, making better if it's by, by, uh, you know, making better use of data. That's what open data is all about.
And, and allowing citizens then to participate? You guys have any questions? And so the, the best place to start, if people feel they have a working knowledge of it now, is an open data policy is what you said?
So there's, you know, I wrote optional next to it because a lot of cities, you know, like Grand Island, Beatrice, they, they just got started without an open data policy. Basically, all they did was they, they identified what are the low hanging fruit and what are pieces of data that people would care about. And I can tell you, um, you know, just from working with and talking to a lot of different cities, you know, the general themes like education, public safety, economic development, those are, you know, in general, things that affect people's quality of life and things that citizens and businesses care about knowing. So if you can identify, you know, some of these low hanging fruit, you know, and open up that data, you know, the best way to begin is really just to start somewhere.
And, and I'm not asking you just to commit to anything. I, I'm just really asking for a general window of time. Say that city council administration came together, we decided, yes, we want to do this in the future. Um, we identified our low hanging fruit, what we wanted to put into our first portal. Um, can you give me a period of time that you think that that would take?
Sure, yeah. I mean, typically, um, you know, I can ju- I'll just give you live examples. Grand Island took about a month and a half. Beatrice took less than two months for us to complete, uh, you know, their portal, get, get everything up and running properly on their, on their website. Takes about a month or two.
Andrews, um, thank you very much. You have anything else you want to add before we hang up?
No, just thank you guys for your time. And, uh, if any other questions come up, uh, Carol, Phil, you guys have my information. Feel free to reach out. Um, I'm happy to be a resource for you guys as you try to figure out how to best leverage open data to, to help out the city.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you guys. Have a good night.
Thank you. Item number six, liquor license, none. Item seven, ordinance for adoption, third reading, seven, seven A, ordinance number three eight two seven. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
And this is the proposed amended ordinance number three eight two seven. An ordinance to repeal section twenty-one dash three of the Bellevue Municipal Code regarding cutting, injuring, et cetera, of trees, shrubs, et cetera, in the city of Bellevue. To amend section twenty-nine point five dash eighteen pertaining to arborist licenses. To repeal sections twenty-nine point five dash eighteen and twenty-one dash three of the Bellevue Municipal Code as heretofore existing and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I will first move the ordinance and then move to amend. So at this point, I make the motion that we approve ordinance thirty-eight twenty-seven.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? Mr. Preister.
Mayor, I, I want to thank Councilman Carmichael for working on this, coming up with some good information. He may wish to comment as well. But I think since the last meeting when we carried it over, we have put it in a different form, in a different location, so it's more consistent with our current tree ordinance. And at this point, I think it satisfies the Parks Department and their efforts. It certainly satisfies mine, and I would let Councilman Carmichael speak for himself.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. Um, done what I did, a lot of conversation on this and a lot of work, and it's, it's culmination of both of our, our input. And it, uh, it makes the ord- it makes the city's chapters more congruent and effective to have them in one location, so I'm in full support of what we've done here.
Thank you.
Another example of good team effort.
Thank you.
I make the motion. Did I already move?
We made a motion and a second and discussion, but we need to, do we vote on the?
Amended.
To amend.
I move to amend ordinance thirty-eight twenty-seven with the amendment that's in our packet.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? Mr. Preister.
Just to comment, there's a lot of red on the one copy. The, that's because we're moving everything into a new section. But all we're actually doing is section L for anybody who's following this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further discussion, comments? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item eight, ordinance for public-
We need to vote on it as amended, ma'am.
Moving right along. So as amended, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item number eight, ordinance for public hearing, second reading, eight A, ordinance number three eight two eight. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number three eight two eight. An ordinance of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, classifying the employees of the city, fixing the ranges of compensation of such employees, providing a pay range schedule, providing for publication in pamphlet form, providing ordinance, or, excuse me, repealing ordinance number three eight one eight, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. I'm now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance three eight two eight, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. The third and final reading will be on December the fourteenth. Item eight B, ordinance three eight two nine. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number three eight two nine. An ordinance to amend section eleven dash one twenty-one of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to an occupation tax for hotels in the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. I'm now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time.
Jim Risto with the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce. I think in your packet you already have our letter of support, but I just wanted to come back up and reaffirm that the chamber stands firmly behind the increase in lodging tax as comparative to equalling what the Omaha and La Vista rates are, which also have conference or event centers similar to what we're looking at. The backside of this is, you know, when we entered into this, this project over a year ago, we knew that the conference center would also be a catalyst for future economic development within the city, so it only makes sense that we would support this behind that to get that catalyst moving. But then moving towards the hotel sector, uh, you know, the hotels. Amanda, who is working for the Kinseth Group, has been working pretty diligently with all the other hotel operators. And one of the things that we saw in our project, if you recall, was the spin-off for, um, events and the like that would go to the other hotels. So within that, the hotels would also benefit from increased occupancy in their hotels as we kind of predicted. She's already seeing, you know, the relationships are already being built. But if you had a three-hundred-person conference come into town and they have a hundred and twenty-four rooms, it's common sense that the idea is to move them into adjoining hotels or surrounding hotels, which largely keeps them in Bellevue. Hampton Inn right down the street has already announced that they're going to remodel. Um, I believe it's a million-dollar reinvestment in their hotel, which goes in strength with what's happening right down the street from them. They see that as a viable corridor or viable entity to help them grow their hotel business. Culver's sitting right next door. I know it's not a hotel, but Culver's, if you guys drove by last week, they were closed for the week. They've invested in a major remodel too. So you're seeing a lot of the businesses that are around that conference center and hotel are starting to invest to, if you want to say, uh, upgrade or redo their structures. And I think we'll see more of that because they see that as another catalyst. Um, besides the Hampton Inn and Culver's making those investments, one thing that we've seen and, and it's a benefit to our hotels is sports, sporting events within our community. Bellevue University is working to really grow a lot of their tournaments within. We did a Labor Day tournament where last year we had nineteen teams. This year, they've already grown that to twenty-six teams. And our goal as a chamber in that relationship is to get them into Bellevue Hotels and Bellevue Businesses first. We've seen one, Paul, I think you helped us on, uh, Bellevue Soccer Club along with La Vista. I think they had over fifteen-hundred, uh, participants come into town over Halloween weekend. Um, of those, again, packing the hotels here locally first, which just all goes kind of into the strength of, while there may be an increase in occupation tax, uh, the hotels see the partnership of us helping grow their trade. Not once have we heard a pushback from people coming into town as far as what that rate is. So again, kind of in a nutshell, your chamber stands behind that increase because we also realize that's a funding source, but it's also a catalyst for economic development in our town and growth. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Risto. Mr. Verlouwitz.
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to add to what Jim has indicated, uh, it was being proposed as a half, half percent increase, that from the very start, as we worked towards putting together a business plan for funding of the conference center, that was always, was always, uh, a part of it as a, a revenue source. And, um, we will be, uh, not exceeding what the total tax currently is per room in both the city of La Vista and city of Omaha, and which are two cities that have significant conference centers. So again, it's something that was planned, uh, and something that will not put our hotels at a disadvantage to the adjacent cities that have, um, other, uh, venues for conferences as well.
Thank you, Mr. Verlouwitz. Mr. Henson.
Is, um, the money that is raised on this occupation tax, is that earmarked to help finance, say, that conference center? I mean, is those dollars can be taken somewhere else? Or is that dollars that would be earmarked specifically for a certain purpose?
The, the dollars that we're anticipating, uh, from the increased, from the conference center and the increased lodging, um, that obviously elevates our, uh, revenue stream. From the lodging tax, uh, the intent, our intent is for that to be directed towards, uh, again, helping to fund the various costs connected with the conference center. So in a nutshell, it's intended to be directed towards that, yes.
It isn't, uh, required, it's just, I mean, that's something that you're going to make that decision on. So that some way down the road that those dollars go somewhere else, you know? What control is there on that?
The, um, the financing, you might say the amortization schedule is a fairly long-term schedule. We're looking, as I recall initially, we're looking at twenty years out uh, for actually the, you know, the funding of the project, for it to be paid off ultimately, uh, then it comes back into the city's hands. Uh, or we have the option to, to sell it to the Kinseth, uh, as the, the operator. But, um, it's, it's a long-term financing, uh, structure, and so it isn't something like a sales tax that five years later, you've got a tax in place and those dollars are now be going, going somewhere else.
Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. Dan, was this half-cent, uh, lodging tax increase, was it already factored into the projected revenues that we passed on our budget then?
Yes. That's why it's really important that as a council, you move forward with enacting it.
Okay. Been good to know that, have that transparency ahead of time.
Are there others who would like to speak on this item at this time? See none, I'll close the public hearing. The third and final reading will be on December the fourteenth. Item nine, ordinance for introduction, first reading, nine A, ordinance number three eight three zero. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number three eight three zero. An ordinance declaring the necessity, expediency, and propriety of vacating all of Emeline Street, formerly known as Union Street, lying west of the Easterly Right-of-Way Line of Abandoned Rock Island Railroad and lying east of the Westerly Right-of-Way Line of Abandoned Rock Island Railroad. Together with all of the North-South Alley and all of the East-West Alley in Block One, Candace and Lewis First Edition to Albright Annex, together with vacating all of Gertrude Street, formerly known as Hadfield Street, lying west of the Easterly Right-of-Way Line of Abandoned Rock Island Railroad and lying east of the Westerly Right-of-Way Line of Abandoned Rock Island Railroad, and all of the North-South Alley and all of the East-West Alley. In Block Two, Candace and Lewis First Edition to Albright Annex, lying west of the Easterly Right-of-Way Line of Abandoned Rock Island Railroad and lying east of the Westerly Right-of-Way Line of Abandoned Rock Island Railroad. All located in the northeast quarter of section sixteen, township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the Sixth Prime Meridian, Saran County, Nebraska. Not heretofore vacated, repealing all ordinances and all parts of ordinances in con- conflict herewith and designating an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be on December the fourteenth. Nine B, ordinance number three eight three one. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number three eight three one. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of various purpose bonds, series twenty-fifteen of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, of the principal amount of four million, twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds of the city and paying the cost of paving streets and alleys within street improvement districts, numbers twenty-one eleven dash four, twenty-one eleven dash eighteen, twenty-one eleven dash twenty-one, twenty-one eleven dash twenty-three, twenty-fifteen dash one, and twenty-fifteen dash two, exclusive of intersections and paying the cost of paving intersections and areas formed by the crossing of streets and alleys within the city in said districts. Prescribing the form of said bonds, providing for a sinking fund and for the levy of taxes to pay said bonds, providing for the sale of the bonds, authorizing the delivery of the bonds to the purchaser, providing for the disposition of the bond proceeds, and ordering the ordinance published in pamphlet form.
Thank you. And staff requests the statutory rule requiring reading on the three different days be suspended and the vote be taken after the public hearing is held at this meeting. I'll now, I'll now open for public hearing on this item.
We're just on, we're on first reading, so he can just introduce it for us. And then we'll take a motion for public hearing. Shoot away, John.
Okay. For the record, I'm John Treseck with the Meredith Investment Corporation. Um, the purpose of this bond issue is, is twofold. First, the city has outstanding, uh, a million, six-hundred-and-sixty thousand of its general obligation bonds, which were issued in twenty-ten, uh, which are optional for refunding. Uh, those rates are, are, on those existing bonds run from two-point-seven-five percent in the, uh, bonds maturing next December, out to four percent in the long end. As I've shown in, in the schedule I've, I've handed out prior to the meeting, by issuing, uh, refunding bonds in the amount of one million, six-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars, the city can realize a net savings after, after issuance expenses of about a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, uh, which results in a seven-point-four-six net present value of, of savings, which is something the auditors always want to look at. In short, it's a good deal. It worked, it coincided, uh, to refund this issue along with the permanent financing for the street improvement districts that were recited in the ordinance. Uh, these include Chandler Hills, Martin View, Ridge Road, Sun Valley, Blue Ridge, Child's, and Child, Child's Estates, uh, which totaled in excess of two-point-three million dollars. The, the task that Mr. Severson and I engaged in, and yes, I promise I'd give him some of the credit for this, uh, is to layer in the, the new bonds, uh, taking advantage of the savings in the old, but also looking at, at the, uh, overall debt service on an annual basis for all of the existing bonds outstanding. Keeping your, your debt service relatively level now without requiring an increase in taxes to, to pay bonds issued on, on account of the, uh, additional bonds issued. And still working it out so that there's a gradual decline, uh, to make room for additional bonds that we anticipate coming in the future. Uh, the schedule looks a little asymmetric when you look at the, at the second page. Trying to fit it in with, with what bonds would, would meet demand where, uh, if we moved too many bonds out into the long end at the higher interest rate, we would end up, uh, actually increasing your overall debt service on an annual basis. So it was a juggling act, even as we put this together, even through today. I didn't have final, final commitment from my trading desk until about four-twenty this afternoon, uh, trying to, to figure out where the market was moving. Total issuance cost for all the bonds issued does not exceed one-point-two-five percent of the par amount of bonds. That includes underwriting, uh, CUSIP, printing of the, of the bonds and official statements. That includes underwriting, CUSIP, printing of the bonds and official statements, and the approving opinion of Bond Council, which is, which are all critical expenses, but that's all included in that one fee. You're not going to get a bill thirty days from now or forty-five days from now relating to this issue. These bonds are optional for prepayment anytime after their fifth anniversary. So, if five years from now, rates are such that you're able to roll these into a new issue at lower interest rates, you can do so. Or I guess if you end up with more money than you know what to do with, you can just pay them off. I do ask, because the market is very uncertain, I often know, and I'm able to call down to Rich sometime during the day, saying, this is what it looks like. Wasn't able to do that, like I said, until four twenty today, and I don't know what it's going to be tomorrow. We would ask that you waive the three readings for the purpose so that we can lock in these rates right now. At that point, the risk all floats to Emeritus. I have to answer to my boss if we don't get them sold, but at any rate, you know that on closing date, the terms are fixed, your payments are fixed, the money you're going to get is fixed. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? See none? What are the wishes of the council? Any motion? Mr. Carmichael?
I'd like to make a motion to open up for a second reading, please.
Motion by Mr. Carmichael.
If we could, if we could have a motion to suspend the rule to have reading on three separate meetings and open it up for public hearing.
As Pat said. I need a second, second by Councilman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. Now I need a motion to support. Mr. Carmichael.
Make a motion to approve.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? Councilman Blood, did you have a question?
I thought when there is an amount, we had to include that in the motion, didn't we? We're told that during our audits.
We do when we're doing contracts and listing the contractor, but the bonds, it's listed specifically on the agenda and on the resolution, or on the ordinance.
See no other questions, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item nine B one, resolution twenty fifteen dash two six, calling refunding bonds originally issued March twenty-nine, 2010, for payment in the total outstanding principal of one million six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Councilman Blood.
Motion to approve resolution two zero one five dash two six.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item ten, public hearing on matters other than ordinance. Ten A, public hearing on the request of SID one seven one, Tregarin, to expend one hundred twenty-two thousand ninety-three dollars for park improvements, resolution, park improvements. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Thank you, Mr. Tresec.
Madam Chairman, members of the council, my name is John Fullencamp. My address is one hundred and fourteen forty West Center Road, and I am the attorney for SID one seventy-one, which is Tregarin. I'm sure you're familiar with Tregarin. According to state statutes, we are here to ask your approval to authorize the funding and purchase, or excuse me, and construction of a respite park to be located on a fire department site. I know you have a packet that has everything in front of you. I just wanted to tell you that this is something that the SID has been saving up for some time. This district is in a fine financial situation. They have excess funds in their general fund that they have left their levy at such where they could have the funds necessary to build this park. It is detailed in your packet. I've, Chairman Hall, who is with me here tonight, fortunately had some photographs of an existing facility, so I can hold those up and be happy to pass those on. Now, this, this one that's shown here is a little smaller than the one we have because the one that we are proposing also has a shelter in it. There's probably some different five hundred, some plantings, connections to the proposed Daniel Loop Trail, and it's a very nice, calming, adult respite facility, kind of a nice little microclimate. It's something our residents have looked forward to. We have submitted it to your Parks Department, and I think that they are in favor of it. Again, the financing is arranged. We've secured a permanent easement agreement. This actually goes on the property owned by the Fire Department, and we have secured a permanent easement from them that runs to the benefit of the district. It runs to the benefit of the public, and it runs to the benefit of the city of Bellevue in the event of annexation. So, we think we've covered that legal base, so I would be happy to answer any questions and would urge your approval.
Any questions from the council? See none. Mr. Shuchek or Mr. Dunn, do you have any questions or comments? Thank you. See none. Thank you, Mr. Fullencamp.
Thank you.
Are there others who would like to speak on this item? See none, I'll close the public hearing. Item ten A one, resolution twenty fifteen dash twenty-five, approving the expenditure by SID one seven one, Tregarin, in the amount of one hundred twenty-two thousand ninety-three dollars for the construction of park improvements. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution two zero one five dash two five in the amount of one hundred twenty-two thousand ninety-three dollars.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item eleven, resolution none. Twelve, current business. Twelve A, B, and C is under consent. Twelve D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding between splash pads for Bellevue and the city of Bellevue for splash pads in Everett Park. Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding between splash pads for Bellevue and the city of Bellevue for splash pad in Everett Park, please. Second.
Second by Mr. Hanson. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve E, approve the amended, addendum to the GIS inter-local agreement to amend Exhibit A to include updates of the GIS coalition funding breakdown and to amend Exhibit B to include updates for twenty sixteen N I R O C and our oblique and ortho photography cost shares. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this addendum to the GIS inter-local agreement.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion? Mr. Modri.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to amend Exhibit.
I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to amend Exhibit A. The second table, the FY seventeen total, the correct amount should be sixty-three thousand two hundred dollars. The amount on the table is incorrect, adds up incorrectly.
Mr. Dunn, do you have that? So, we want to make sure the correct amount is in there?
Sixty-three thousand two hundred?
Right. I'll second. Councilman Motors.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion?
Vote on amendment only.
Please vote on the amendment only.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
And the original motion as amended.
Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item twelve F, approve the request to replace the sewer line on Child's Road East from Bellevue Boulevard to Moore Drive and authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Gerhart Plumbing not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve the request to replace the sewer line on Child's Road East from Bellevue Boulevard to Moore Drive and authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Gerhart Plumbing not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? Questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve G, approve the proposal for geotechnical exploration between Theo Geotech, Inc., and the city of Bellevue in the amount of eleven thousand two hundred for the proposed approach slab repairs along Cornhusker Road and Highway three seventy. Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal for geotechnical exploration between Theo Geotech, Inc., and the city of Bellevue in the amount of eleven thousand two hundred dollars for the proposed approach slab repairs along Cornhusker Road and Highway three seventy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve H, approve the purchase of a steerable storm drain tractor and pan and tilt zoom camera in the amount of sixty-three thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars and thirteen cents to maintain accurate data regarding the storm drains. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve the purchase of a steerable storm drain tractor and pan and tilt zoom camera in the amount of sixty-three thousand five hundred twenty, excuse me, sixty-three thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirteen cents.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Dunn, real quick, this is a very unique vehicle. I'm assuming that there's not, there just was not like a big process here. I'm assuming there's only probably one company to go to, or how did, can you explain how that worked?
I believe that was vetted through our wastewater operations manager, and that was the equipment that we determined that we needed to work with our existing closed circuit TV equipment and truck that wastewater has.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Modri.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Dunn, what did we do before this? Anything, you know, what are, what is this bringing us? What's the benefits of this tractor for us?
The benefits is to further assess our storm sewer system, which by my understanding.
Mr. Dunn, could you?
It's not been done consistently. When we've, when we've had to assess the system, we'd have to contract it out or hire it out. The current camera system that wastewater has is too small for the larger storm drain pipes, so this will assist us in assessing our storm sewer, and it'll help us with our asset management.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dean. I appreciate that explanation. In our budget, we did plan for this. The finance director made sure that we had funds so we could do a complete assessment of our current system so that instead of doing crisis management and going out and repairing sewers when they break, we can get a good assessment, we can determine in advance what the conditions are, we can budget and prioritize which ones we repair, just like we do on our streets. And then we can do a rotational plan and getting better prices from contractors rather than like an issue we're dealing with right now that was an emergency and we're spending way more money because something broke down at an odd time. Is that all accurate?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Concerns? Questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve I, approve the internet crimes against children grant in the amount of four thousand dollars. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the internet crimes against children grant in the amount of four thousand dollars.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote. Oh, did you, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to make sure that we recognize how hard our Bellevue Police Department works to gain grants. Their budget's very tight. It's much tighter than it really should be, and they work within those constraints. And I just wanted to say, this is one of many grants that they get throughout the year, and well done.
Thank you. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve J, approve the request for release of funds and certification for CDBG twenty fifteen projects authorized submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve the request for release of funds and certification for CDBG two hundred and fifteen projects and to authorize the submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? Questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item thirteen, city administrators' report. Comments must be limited to the items on the current city administrators' report. Councilwoman Blood.
I actually have a question that an item was missing on the administrators' report. Who was working on bringing forward information on the open data policy that we requested information on?
Actually, Larry and his staff, Phil Davidson and I, have been researching policies out there. Mr. Ho is going to provide us, propose some examples, and we did obtain a couple of examples, which we're reviewing to see what will ideally fit our needs the best.
For some reason, it wasn't in the city administrators' report.
Sorry.
I'm not pointing out that you did something wrong. I was concerned.
No, no, that's fine. We have been working on it. I guess, as usual, we'd entertain questions. I know there were some questions earlier today or the weekend that we hopefully tried to answer that council members had, but if there's anything else, we're here to answer them, hopefully.
Anything? See none, thank you. We'll move on to item number fourteen. Public request to be heard. Any member of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution Number thirty-five regarding the principles of conduct and decorum, which states any statement made during the council meetings by the mayor, members of the city council, city officials, and employees, or any members of the general public shall not involve personal, impertinent, or slanderous attacks on individuals, regardless of whether the individual so attacked is elected official, city official, or an employee or a member of the general public in City Code two dash six eight regarding the matters addressing the council. Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted outside the council chambers. Speaker, please limit your presentations to five minutes.
Good evening. Chuck Frederick, one five one one Madison Street. I was going to have a whole list of more things I was going to talk about, but I'm going to save a lot of that for next meeting, the only meeting in December. In the past, I've talked about the culture of the city, and I mentioned how Papillion had a problem with their leadership, and they turned, they had new leadership, new people, and you can see what happened. They're the second-best city in the United States as far as we're living right now. I also talked about transparency, and I, you know, even though there are people talking about how good our transparency is, I asked for a list of committee members, of the committees and the members, three or four weeks ago, and I want to make sure that I make this clear, that the city clerk's office has always done a good job. Now, I think they've, they've done a great job giving me the information they need, but they don't have that information. And last, now for some reason, they want, they want the city clerk office to create a list. It's not up to their job to create a list. Somebody in this room right here should have a list that should have been given to me a long time ago. I know if I went to Papillion and I, when I asked for things there, I get it right away. So, I'm really disappointed in that area altogether, so this, I just don't understand why, when I ask for something, I don't get a response from anybody, not right now, but sometime later on. I've also asked for the, people up here have been talking about how good we are now financially versus how good we were, and nobody has so far shown me the step-by-step how we got there. So, that's just some of the things that I think really that, a lot of people watch these meetings and see me up here, and they applaud me for coming up here, and they think that I'm doing a good job, but I'm not getting a response, and if you don't get the response to me, you're not getting the response to them either. But I'll mention other things next, next meeting. I'm just going to say about the, talking about the dogs and that webinar, the dog park, is that a few weeks ago, I had my dog. park, is that a few weeks ago, I had my dog out at Jewel Park, and a young man was there from Michigan, was, he was, had gone to Michigan, he's driving, he's driving three corgis back, driving them to California. The lady in Michigan was 85 years old, she was a breeder, and she was selling them to a place in California. And so he Googled in and found Jewel Park on his way to California. And so my dog and her three dogs had a nice time together for a short time, but then the one thing he didn't mention, I think somebody should look into it, is that he mentioned how good the dog parks were in Texas particularly. And maybe somebody up here or the Parks Department should look into how we could improve our dog park, because we do have a nice one, but it sounds like this one compared to ones in Texas, it's not really a comparison. So I would appreciate somebody looking to that, too. But thank you for everything. Thank you, and everybody have a nice Thanksgiving.
Are there others? See none, I'll close the public request to be heard. Item number 15 is executive session. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, for the protection of the public interest, I moved, moved to go into executive session to discuss an update on the Old Town Real Estate negotiations and a discussion of potential collective bargaining between the City of Bellevue and the Bellevue Police Command Staff Association.
Thank you. It is now 7:15, and we will go into executive session where our discussion will be restricted to as stated by Councilwoman Blood.
I'll second the motion.
I was closing down.
Please vote.
I'll vote.
Any other discussion? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.